All right, so 6:33 PM, Tuesday, June 22, 2021. I'm going to call for the second meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and this is being taken by Gail Hunter. So this is a meeting with one agenda item, and that is to review the Board of Selectmen's letter to mass housing regarding this, the SLV, proposed SLV 40B project. A draft of that letter has been sent out, which we believe is the final draft. That letter has been sent out to board members. And we discussed this at our last meeting in some detail. It's been updated a little bit since we last spoke. I have received, or Greg and I have received an updated copy with comments from Ann Harrison. And what my plan is tonight, it's a seven-page letter, is for the board to go through this line by line and finalize it tonight in every respect. And it's my intent to print it and sign it tonight as well. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to present my MS Word editing session, and we'll go through this document. And that's about it, as far as members of the public are concerned. I am going to allow members of the public to make comments for minor editing suggestions and perhaps ask questions, but it will be limited. There will be no major revisions to this letter at this point. We've been through several rounds. We've taken significant input from multiple boards, multiple organizations. So this, this letter is pretty much in its final form at this point, just so you're aware. All right, so let's get going. As soon as I decide which exact window I'm gonna present to everybody.
Eli?
Yeah.
I just have a quick question for Greg, if I may.
Sure, go ahead. Well, I find wish of my thousands of windows I want to share with everybody.
Greg, I apologize for sending them 11th hour to you, but did you get the, the, the a few amendments that I, that were just sort of typo kind of things?
So I have not incorporated those yet, Becky.
Okay, but yeah, because I've got some other suggestions, but I did email those little ones. And anyway, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Eli.
I'll be planning on live editing this document that people can see right now, I hope. Can all board members and Greg see this?
Yes.
Okay, good. So Becky, your, your comments will have to merge into this document tonight during this meeting. So I'm imagining it won't be too terribly difficult, I'm hoping.
Nope, nope.
All right. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. I guess the best way is for us to simply, we've, we've all read this document. I want to read through it again. I'm not going to read it out loud. I want board members to read through the first paragraph here, tell me when they're done reading, including Ann's edits. And then we can just accept all the edits and move on to the next piece. How about that?
Eli, could you enlarge that just slightly? Is that possible?
Yes, I can actually. Is that better?
More? One more time. There you go. That's getting better.
Thank you. There we go.
And if I am scrolling back and forth during the conversation here, you all are going to have to make me stop because that's going to be an absent-minded thing. I'll try not to do it.
So.
Eli, how do you want to handle comments?
Comments? If you have a comment, when you run into it, just write it down. When you get to the end of the paragraph, we'll take all the comments from the board.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
When John says go, I'm going to go. Oh, I hope John Round wasn't here. Yes, he is good. Take that.
I'm good.
All right. So is everybody good with these edits?
I have one to add.
Okay, tell me where.
Local project initiative. The language of the law, I believe, is local initiative project. Lip.
Oh, yep.
Eli, if, if we're hyphenating one Manchester by the sea, should we hyphen both or all?
Yes, we should.
Actually, that was done deliberately because the sanctuary is hyphenated and Greg writes it without a hyphen. And we don't need to make them parallel because it's SLV's mistake.
Okay, but up an aisle later, oops.
Oops, okay, fine. So yeah, fine. Okay, hyphens everywhere then.
I agree.
And there's a space before the by in the
the title line. Now, the title line, Mr. Bushby.
Manchester hyphen spaced by.
Thank you. Members of the public, I'm going to take your comments at the end of the page. All right, board members, otherwise clear with the first paragraph?
Yes.
All right, go ahead and start reading the second half of this page, and I'm going to start accepting comments. It's going to be very much a real-time operation.
There's an extra space after number one fails.
And is that, just in terms of composition?
I tried to make, I tried to make the list parallel.
How about failures?
No.
As opposed to are fails?
They're all verbs. Perhaps we should change the previous sentence to say, this project is
No, I'm not. It's I think it's good to point out that, that, you know, the key aspects. Okay, all right. I see what you're saying.
Maybe are that it? In the, in the first line.
I mean, it would have to be, yeah, are that it? And then the colon, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Are what?
Sentence, the key aspects which make this project inappropriate are that it, colon. I don't know that they should be capitalized by.
Yep, they should.
Even though they're
I wouldn't do that. That's, I would say that's the project.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Are we going through this section now? Are we giving our comments?
Yeah.
All right, the fifth, fifth point of degrading the environment is very clumsy. It's the only word I can think of. I'm sorry to put it out that way in its writing. It kind of just runs on with lots of clarifying phrases that make the whole thing less clear. I realize that all the other statements are one or two sentences, but I think this needs to be broken up into much more clearly written English. This is from blasting.
Yeah, from massive blasting.
So
Could it just be degrade the environment, period?
No, no, I think it needs to point out what the arguments that are going to be forthcoming are.
Oh, I agree. I'm not saying that, Jeff. I'm saying that after degrades the environment, then you say
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just, just have, you know, massive blasting on top to water and then, you know, on top of the hilltop, water quality controls involving municipal drinking water supply. Yeah, break those up into sort of
How about
semicolons then, is what you're saying, Becky? Just one semicolon after another.
Yes, thank you, John.
Okay, I would drop from massive blasting, I would drop of the from massive blasting, the top 40 feet.
From master, from massive blasting, the top 40 feet.
Yep. To water quality concerns, comma. I know, water quality concerns. And just leave it a water quality concern.
Yeah.
Because we're going to elaborate on how it contaminates drinking water.
So you want to get rid of
Or to, or to contamination, potential contamination of local water. I, I would just say water quality concerns and eliminate all the rest of that up to runoff. Our water quality concerns from runoff. Leave the from runoff in.
That was
Comma. After runoff. Take out Ann and put in two.
After disposal system, comma, to protected vernal pools. I don't think you need the onsite or nearby, just, you know, that
So you need a comma after wastewater disposal system.
Correct.
Well, but then he can argue that we wouldn't let him into the sewers.
I know his, 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 his project proposal is to create a wastewater disposal system. That's what his proposal is.
I understand, Becky, but he could argue that we didn't let him into the sewers.
But we can't legally. We're not allowed to at this point in time.
Well, we don't argue that in the letter.
Oh.
To, to an unvetted wastewater disposal system because we don't have any of the engineering guide, guides or anything else. He said he wasn't going to do that until he was approved for the project.
I think he has to do it for the CBA, but
But yes, he does, but it's an unvetted onsite wastewater disposal system. We know nothing about it.
But that's not, that, that's, that is not part of this, this point in the, in the what is the word? Process. I see what you're saying, Jeff. I don't, I don't have a problem with saying something along the lines of unvetted. I'm just not sure unvetted is the proper word.
Potential infiltration of local water supply by an unvetted wastewater disposal system.
But do you want to get into that now or later when we get into things? I mean, we're eliminating verbiage right now simply to just get the points made and then clarify and explain later on further in the letter. Or do you think that that's such a big point that that should be made right at this point, right at the outset?
Well, it's there. If you want to keep anything about the wastewater disposal system, I think it needs to be clarified because having a large wastewater disposal system is not in and of itself a bad thing. So either we take it out completely and just go to protected vernal pools.
No, I think it needs to be there. I think it needs to be there because when, you know, when anybody looks at the site, how he's going to get that system, he's going to have to do massive fill to support the system structurally. Anyway, I, okay.
Okay.
Is, is there another word besides unvetted, though? It's, it's just
Undescribed?
Proscribed?
Unknown. Um.
How about unexplained? I mean, we don't know what it is.
Here's the company. They're going to do it.
undefined.
undefined sounds good, John. Eli, Greg?
undefined.
Yep.
And then a comma after sis disposal system.
Is that supposed to be protected or is it supposed to be threatened? What's the point that's being made here?
The sentence we moved it around a little bit, so we
I know. So the sense isn't quite, I'm not sure protected is the right
I would just say vernal and, and
There are, there are some certified vernal pools, not on the site, but nearby.
Yeah, nearby.
So certified?
Nearby certified vernal pools.
We can't say certified on site, though, can we?
But we can say, we can say?
We cannot say certified vernal pools on site.
Instruction site. Greg, is that correct?
I thought there was one certified onsite. Just double checking. Looks like it's a potential certified.
The ones onsite or nearby, Greg?
No, there's definitely certified offsite nearby, but there are vernal pools onsite that have not been certified.
Well, let's go, how about with nearby certified?
Yeah, I'd put nearby, make that an adjective in front. You don't need to have that at the end there. I get a net.
I would say, I would just say vernal I would just say vernal. Let's just say to vernal pools onsite nearby and keep out of the clarification argument. I would agree. Okay?
So is this sentence why people want it?
Except you took away the capital F. Why'd you do that?
Because it's a colon.
Well, then you need to take away the capital T.
Or put, make it, make it a period, make it a period so that it's parallel with everything else and, and a capital F.
Then I would do the same up at overturns local zoning.
Yep.
Thank you. Also, number three, I'm not sorry, number four, defies financial reality.
I did that.
Oh, yep, yep, okay. Okay, I think that that's fine.
All right, so that's page one. And now, since we've hit the end of the page and everybody's on the board is
All right, I, I just have a question whether you need all of those comments, commas in there and five. I think when you go two and two and two, you only need the one, the comma after nearby. You don't need the other commas.
I think they're separating points, right?
Yeah.
Is that kind of emphasizing the separation or no?
It's a series of phrases.
Well, then you put a, put a comma after hilltop.
Yes, yep. Way to go there, John.
No, because that's from, that's from to.
No, it's
Okay, okay, I
Yeah, it's all right.
I'm fine.
Don, if you got any more changes, well, I'll just collapse from the top here.
Keep going.
Just at the very top, we'll need to get rid of draft and put a date in.
Draft two, goodbye. Where you want today.
I'd put it above his name.
Space between that and Michael.
No, 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 ND.
No, ND.
And
Yep.
And then you need to right-click on June 22 and accept the change.
Yeah. All right, now, while I am going through accepting changes, Sandy had a comment, I think, on page one. Sandy, go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Great, thanks. Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I have really a question regarding the overall format of the letter. That is, is everything presented in order of priority? Overall, with these five issues and within the issues? I understand it's a concern that the mass housing actually reads everything. So I would think that making sure that priority items are visible upfront is critical. And also have enough data points been added where, where it says water quality, making sure that it says drinking water or that the water comprises 50% of, of the town's water supply. Key issues like that are very critical. So I just had a question regarding the order of things and the details with data points or appropriate descriptors.
So in terms of the order.
And especially when we get to some of the larger paragraphs later on, it seems, again, I think Jeffrey had a comment regarding some of the writing, making sure that key points are highly visible when someone starts that area and paragraph. I think it's really important.
So I think this section is, is pretty concise. And I, I think that if we went back and forth between board members and citizenry, each collective would have a different priority for what thing here. So I don't think it's really critical for us to necessarily order these by some priority there. They all are important. And I think we're not making an elevator pitch here. If we're, you know, if we're hanging our hopes on catching somebody's eye within the first 30 seconds on us and the, and the reading of this, that'd be a pretty poor situation for the government to be in. So I'm, I'm not sure that I want to get into reorganizing the, the items here based on what we might think is, is the priority. Like, we could argue about that for all night long. As for the, the details later on, we'll begin, also the paragraphs later on will, will, will certainly be rejected.
I think it's important to keep that in mind when you're working on it. And of course, this would be like thinking about the critical things to make sure that they stand out. And of course, that's from the board's point of view versus the citizenry regarding what you think is going to be the most effective.
Yeah.
And that, you know, any data points are always good if you think they're strong, like 50% water supply.
Andy, we're going to be getting into the details of, of some of these things later on. There are going to be a bunch of also large attachments from other organization, organizations, which we're referencing here, including some write-ups on water quality. So we're not going to cover all of these points in this letter, but we'll, we'll discuss them when we get down to the finer points. If we think there are any details that need to be added down there, we can, but I'd like to talk about that when we get down to those sections, not on this first page. There's any comments specific to this first page? If not, I'd like to move on.
I, I think the, the specific comment is if there's anything, I think it's important on five regarding water quality that whether it's drinking water or percentage of the town's water.
I, I actually think, Sandy, that that's a spot-on concern that we should highlight, and it's not highlighted in the detail on number five. I agree with you. The 50%, I think is very strong and important argument to make. It's not a peripheral part of our water supply.
Right, right. Okay, just, just thought I'd help. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jeff, are you arguing that we should make an addition here or down?
No, I, I think when we get down into the details on five, on page 35 of this letter,
43.
On, on the page that has the five details that we should, we should include in there, 50% of our waters, town water supply is impacted by any damage here.
All right.
And in just overall thinking about within each section, that key elements don't get lost because they're embedded right within a paragraph, you know, four paragraphs down within a section, just to sort of keep that in mind while you're going through something that I sort of noticed. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Hang on one second. Add another comment from your name's not on your Zoom icon, sir. Are you, was it Alan?
Yes.
You had a comment on this first page?
Yes, just a very short comment. Alan McMillan from the, I'm a member, I live in Rockport, member of the Rockport Conservation Commission for 34 years. Yes, just a very short comment. Alan McMillan from the, I'm a member, I live in Rockport, member of the Rockport Conservation Commission for 34 years and a weekly walker through the ME Woods. I just, on number five, where it says some 20-plus waivers, that sentence alone rings alarm bells for the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act, the most we've ever received for a waiver on, and I've been on the ConCon for 34 years, that needs to be emphasized somehow because that, that sentence alone could end this project. That's how important that is under the Wetlands Protection Act. There should never be 20 waivers requested in the Wetlands Protection Act. I'd just like to make that statement, and I'd like to thank all of you for the hard work you're doing. This is, I, I'm so impressed that your town cares enough about this to get this actively involved. And I would like to also remind everyone there that the developer said that he couldn't do.
I need you to stop now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the second page. We didn't get, catch bullet item or an item number six in our last edits. I think we're going with periods here. Everybody good with the changes on this one? All right, let's start down to. Well, let's read and cover all of what's on section one on this page. Actually. Yeah, let, let's.
Where are we?
So this is, so here we're getting to the details of, of item one, and I wonder if board members want to process all of item one, reread it again, and then discuss it now, or do you want to hit it by paragraph, paragraph by paragraph? How would you prefer to do this?
Take them in chunks.
Paragraph is good.
All right. So first paragraph, this one here.
The extra space in the last sentence.
Under, I, I don't think it needs to say meets these principles in these ways. I just, I mean, it's, it fails to meet these principles.
I think in these ways is important because they are, in fact, a list of the ways in which it fails. It's not a narrative.
You want to put a colon after that, Ann?
Sure.
All right, so, so that they know we're, a listing's coming and it's in the form of paragraphs, but there are, I don't know, 10 paragraphs.
In, in, in the following ways instead of in these ways?
Well, that's, that's where we were at before, yeah. Or it follows was the word. Yeah.
And going back.
And that would, and that would be a colon at the end of that.
Colon, yep, yep.
And are we leaving a, we're beyond number one, mass housing sustainability development principles unmet, colon? Didn't we change that in the other part, or are we going to now? I'm just one, I, I think, I don't know if, I mean, that's just semantics, I suppose, but.
That's consistency.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, thank you, Greg.
What if we took out unmet and underlined mass sustainability development principles?
I like unmet. I think, I like emphasizing that it's, they're, they're not met.
That comes in the very first sentence.
Okay, how about, how about no mass housing sustainable development principles met?
Either one. I, I just want it left there, I think for emphasis. John?
Yeah, I'm looking at that and I'm wondering, I mean, that, that's, is not a sentence, it's just kind of a statement and it's more or less a heading.
Yep.
And I'm looking at all of the other entries, and as I look through the letter, and people need to know where they are in this letter because frankly, it's very long. So I would put that whole thing in capitals. Mass housing sustainability.
What happens that, that follows though, John, is that things are underlined.
What do you mean? What's underlined?
Concentrated development and mixed use, advanced equity.
Yeah, but at least people know that the, the capitalized, you know, phrases at the, after numbers one, two, three, four, five, and six are the sections that follow that first page. That first page is kind of like a summary of, of what's going on here. So I, I just think it's clearer if we had this all in caps, so that people know where they are as they kind of flip around through the many pages here.
Okay, then I would agree with, I would agree with you to capitalize it or bold it, as long as, starting with claiming credit, et cetera, gets indented.
That's okay.
I think so.
That's okay.
I get your point, John, and I think you're right. You know, it's, it, differentiating aspects, I think, will help keep, not that we're, you know, we, we hope the letter content keeps his attention, but.
Yes.
But doing the indentation and the, the capitalizing, I think, is helpful to underscore.
Yep, we may have to do a little word spitting. I see number four probably has to be redone, but we'll get there. But that's the only one. The others are pretty much the, you know, the five or six words that really are the words that were on the first page.
It's not bad. We're doing about 40 minutes or 30 minutes a page, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's only two and a half hours.
That's a long time.
So once we, yeah, so what was the conclusion then on this?
Capitalize that first, first five words.
And we bold it rather than capitalizing it?
I'm okay with that too, but it's got to have some sort of a.
And, and the idea was to capitalize every letter, not just.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
I think, I think just, just bold that sentence, that phrase.
I, I'd be okay with that.
Yep.
Or you could capitalize mass sustainability development principles, and then in regular text, are unmet.
I like the whole thing bold. I think that's.
Yep.
I like, I like the unmet being integrated into the mass housing sustainability development principles. I, I, I just.
So you want that unmet capitalized still?
Yes.
And do you want the period bolded too?
Yeah, the period has to be, that's very important.
Eli, that's up to you. You make that decision. It's your last big one, huh?
Who said are unmet? I think that probably makes a little more sense.
Is it R?
Okay.
Then, then it needs to be lowercase for R and unmet.
Yep.
How about are not met?
Either one.
Last chance, are.
Are not met.
That says ew. I kind of like the ew, but.
Okay.
You guys are happy with this now?
Yep.
Thank God. All right, that, that first paragraph. We're moving on to this paragraph.
Would like it indented.
Well, the whole thing.
The whole paragraph.
Yeah, the whole thing of, all of those paragraphs.
As in that way?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well done, Eli. Mad skills.
He's a real good word guy.
I know. I know who to call if I need help, which is always.
Under you.
All right, so content of this paragraph.
So just so you know, the underlined words are pulled directly from the mass housing principles.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll leave those alone.
So I have a quick question. So it's concentrated development and mixed? It doesn't have uses?
Use should be under.
Okay.
And capitalized. Greg?
Yes.
Yeah, but use should be capitalized, yep.
Oh my God.
Now that we gave you all these compliments, huh?
Yeah.
Um, now, I, I don't know. I just kind of wonder when it says is a stretch at best, is at best is a little, I, I, do I, I find it a little sarcastic and I'm not sure that I think, I'm, what does anybody else, everyone else feel about that?
I think it's very good.
It's kind of colloquial.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's better than is ridiculous.
Well, we can go on and on. I have a thesaurus right nearby.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to add a word at the end of that second paragraph after diverse. I would say diverse and affordable. Affordable is a very key word for this group, and I think we should use it.
Okay. For consistency and style, in the first, the previous paragraph, development should be capitalized?
Yep.
Advance and equity should be capitalized?
Except, Greg, this was pulled directly from the quote.
Well, nor is it reflective of, it's not in the, in their standards.
All right, so you want that?
So advance equity is the only thing that should be underlined? Is that correct?
No, making efficient decisions should be underlined as well.
Okay.
And capitalized.
Really?
Yeah. Making decision, making efficient, that's, 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 that's some of the.
I understand it's language of the, but is it capitalized in the, in the?
It's a heading and, it's a heading in their document.
Okay.
Well, it, it, it's part of their sentence. It's, it's not actually capitalized in the document.
I'm, I'm looking at their document, yeah, and it's section number three is make efficient decisions. Capital M, capital E, capital D.
Okay.
And advanced equity is capital A, capital E. But, you know, they're not being used in sentences, and we're putting them into sentences here.
I, I think it's fine to leave them capitalized. It makes a point. They know that, they know their standards. It makes a point.
And they know that, right, and we're, we're, we're putting those standards in as exclamation points.
Okay.
Is this capitalized?
It's all right.
Yeah.
It's.
It's good.
All right.
I like attempted. You put that in, Ann?
Probably.
Nice. I'm at the, at the bottom, the last sentence where it says, yes, the town needs more, needs, could, does it, would it matter if we said needs and wants? I mean, we are, we want, and we're also trying that. We're trying to get more affordable housing and diverse housing.
Board members, okay with that?
I don't think we need, I mean, we need it, we talk after, in another place about wanting it and what we're doing about wanting it.
Okay.
If, if, if you want to say that, if, rather than saying needs and wants, needs and plans for, and has plans for.
Is planning for. Yeah, has plans for, that's, yes.
But that, that kind of screws up the last phrase.
Okay, you're right. Okay.
Just leave it, I, I just leave it as it is. I think, let's not get too wordy here.
Okay.
Eli, while you're, while you're cleaning up, back up at mixed uses, uses needs to be underlined. Second paragraph.
Second, oh, oh, thank you. Other than that, people are okay with this paragraph?
Yes.
Yep.
Moving on to this one.
You took out the anyways. That's good.
I, I could say, I could think about the last sentence and the previous paragraph, the despite paragraph, as, but not in this location, under this proposal. In this manner is such a vague phrase.
As, or, and not in this.
And as proposed.
As proposed by SLV.
Well, I, maybe just in this location, period.
No, because that's, that's NIMBY.
That's to say, we want another 200-unit place someplace else, and that's not necessarily the case.
Developer rather than SLV.
Of course, it's SL. I wouldn't put that in. Just say, and as proposed, period. They know what we're talking about.
Okay.
Actually, to clean up the language, I would take out and.
Jeff, then you're separated, then, then you're, you're marrying the location and the proposal together.
That's what they are.
Well, that's correct.
I agree, because it's not in this loc, right, but I, I agree with John. I think they need to be separated because it's not just as proposed in this location.
So, but as proposed in another location, we would have, yeah, we would have opinions even in another location, perhaps. We don't want to exclude that.
Do you want this back?
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
I yield.
And back into this paragraph.
Yep, I am.
That's great. That was clean. It was nothing. Making progress.
For us, this is paragraph. This gets capitalized.
Did we not say somewhere else that as opposed to an entire hilltop? Because an entire hilltop is not, I think, 40 feet of hilltop. And we need, I know we go into it a little bit further down, but, but even here.
So 40 feet, so passing away 40 feet of hilltop.
40 feet of hilltop.
40 feet of hilltop ledge.
And can we, should we say, you know, the acreage that encompasses? I know we do later, but I, I just think that, that being specific because first of all, hilltop is not, couldn't, can be something not much, but 40 feet of hilltop. but 40 feet of hilltop ledge, um.
I'd take the, out the in order to. In or, rather, in order, just blasting hilltop ledge to create.
Yep, yep.
Okay. And I'd also, the next to last word, I don't think you need to say intensa use, just say intense use.
I like intense.
Yeah, no, intense stays there. It's not a use, just, it's an intense use, so.
I think it is intense. It is a, I think it is intense a use. Because it's changing the.
For this, for this intense, does, it, the person doesn't say you need a noun.
That's the noun, use.
Okay.
Right, but it's changing, it, it, by having the A in there, changes.
Sounds like awkward English.
Um, I was fine with a use, but if folks want, uh.
I like it in there.
I like.
Now, do we need, I do too.
Fine.
Good with this paragraph?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, this next paragraph fills under the next page, but we're going to take it all at once and not stop in the middle of the sentence. Everybody okay with that idea?
Yep.
Yeah. Yep.
There we go. Oops.
Rather than populations, how about people?
Mm-hmm.
I'd also kind of put a comma after transit right there.
People okay with that?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, put a comma after transit.
Um, and I, I, while I agree with the fact that it's completely out of character for our small New England town, I don't know if that's a reason for denial. I, I, I like that it says no other building comes close in scale, et cetera. But I just don't, I, I kind of think that's, it sounds a bit snobby.
Well, I would say no other residential building. There are buildings that are that large, like the schools, but.
No, the.
Oh, I agree.
The two schools together are smaller than this. Both schools together are smaller than this project.
Right, but that I don't think, it's just, it's a massive building, but, but in terms of it being completely out of character with our small New England town, I just don't, I, I don't see that that needs to be in there. But if everybody else likes it, I'm, I'm fine with it staying in. I just kind of think it has a bit of a.
I like it, but I don't think it's persuasive.
Okay.
No, they, they're not going to care about that.
What about with residents who are isolated from the core of our small New England town?
For the, uh, I think, I'm afraid small New England town.
How about just say the site is isolated?
Our residents, I want, I want to emphasize residents here, though, Becky. That's what I'm, that's why I'm bringing this word in.
Jeff, I do too. I'm just saying eliminate out of character with our small New England town. That's the only part I don't want in there. I think we need to say, yes, it's isolated, it's away from transit, it's away from schools, it's away from groceries, it's away from the heart of the town.
Yeah, so completely isolated from the town.
Mm-hmm.
Always, you've always said isolated once.
So you could start with the site is away from transit, which is one of the, expands housing opportunities criteria. And isolates residents.
Period.
From the, from, from the commercial.
Just say.
Just say isolate residents, period.
Yeah, I say isolates the residents.
Isolates the residents from the rest of the town.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, under this expands housing opportunities, their, their, their goals talk about building homes near jobs, transit, and where services are available.
Right, and this is not. So can we just, can we take that sentence and, and put it in quotations and say, this site does not, and then put the, in that sentence in quotations?
Yeah, this, this, yeah, this, this project does not build homes near jobs, transit, or where services are available.
Right.
Right.
Both their standard.
Yep. And then we can go on to say that no other building in Manchester comes blah, 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 blah.
It does say, further on, the next sentence is foster the development of housing, particularly multifamily and single-family homes in a way that is compatible with the community's character and vision with providing housing. So.
Can we, can we?
To be in keeping with our character.
Well, then we should say that and quote them, that it's not in keeping with the character. Um, I think to say our small New England town is not, we just say it's not in keeping with our character again.
That's fine, yeah.
Can we just quote that? Can we quote that sentence?
Can, can I lead here with this site is away from transit? Does not provide housing, and then using the phrase that Greg just gave.
Yep.
Near.
Near jobs and where services are available.
Near jobs and available services.
Where services are available.
I would quote, yeah, I'd stick as close to what theirs are, their wording is, if not just.
Does not provide housing. You got the does and the not.
Provide housing.
Near.
Jobs.
Near jobs and where services are available.
And available services.
And available services. Thank you.
Why not quote it?
I want to, I think we need to quote it. I think it should be in.
Because, because then they think we're not doing our homework and we're just quoting them.
I don't think so. I think it shows that we, we, we know that that's why it doesn't fit the needs and that we, the opposite, Jeff, that we have done our homework, which is how we know it doesn't suit. But that's, but I, I, I don't know. What does anybody else think? Or.
I think the idea of these is we reference the section that we're referring to, right?
Yep.
And if we paraphrase within here, I think that that's probably sufficient.
Okay.
Um, I would like to take out small New England and just say with our town.
Yes.
So as to de-twee-ify it.
Right.
Other housing in our town.
Um.
I think it's just.
Okay, so the schools are ugly, but that.
Well, that's a matter of opinion.
I'm trying to get close to their language, but not engage the dreaded, the dreaded NIMBY.
Okay.
All right.
So I think we might want to add a sentence here that says it is inconsistent with our vision of providing new housing choices for people of all means, which is a direct quote.
Right, you mean as opposed to complete.
The next sentence, the project is incompatible with our plan and counter what our. Oh.
All right.
Well, this is.
Ann, you're right, and I would take out other housing in, because the next sentence does deal with it. I'm sorry, I read that and then I didn't jump back to it. So I jumped that out. I'm sorry, Eli.
All right.
Um.
So then we're focusing now on this sentence, and is there a proposal to add a clause to it or a sentence to it, Greg?
No, it's fine.
No, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
And people okay with the last sentence?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, that's page two. Members of the public, any comments for this page here so far?
I think we put everybody to sleep.
Oh, yeah, this is going to be just a thriller of a, everybody here, I'm sure.
They're on the edge of their seats.
Yeah. That's because they're getting ready to fall off. All right.
I don't think so. I think this is great. I do.
Uh, I believe that we are indenting along the way, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And here we go. So if we are following.
It should be capital provide, et cetera.
Yeah. I'm going to scroll a little bit so we have more of this page in hand.
Eli?
Yeah.
Can you, can you click on the layout menu up top? Oh, okay. I was looking for change case. Um, because that would help you. You could just swipe the whole thing and put it into, uh.
Capital case.
First word, capital, all the way across.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this or Emacs, I would do that.
I have a change, Eli, in the fifth sentence that starts with in fact, comma, the developer resist, oh, you've got it, even modest measures, okay. Never mind.
Um, I'm wondering about the word single owner car, which is kind of an interesting choice of words. I just say automobile.
Or private car.
Yeah.
I like private car. Or private automobile.
Car is shorter.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but private car says to me like an Uber.
I was going to say it sounds like a.
Yeah, this is like a car for hire.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So I, I just, a car or automobile. I don't, I think private.
Personal? Rather than private.
Maybe, it, it might be. It could be personal, it could be an Uber, but I, I think you just want to be general on this and say, you got to use a car, one way or the other, get there.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily personal. They may not own a car, in which case they've got to use an Uber, but.
I think personal automobile is the only choice there, really.
Um, private car is Uber.
Private car is Uber.
And Lyft, and Lyft.
Mm-hmm, okay, private, sorry.
Comma after boat?
I was wondering about that, if it's boat or boat rapid transit?
No, it's.
Boat.
Yeah.
And does there need to be a comma after bicycling before the and?
That's optional, and we've, and several other places, the last, the next to last item in the list did not have a comma after it.
Has not been.
I don't want to get into the Oxford comma argument.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we?
Go either way, but you've just got to be uniform, and right now, we're not putting a comma in, so.
Yes.
Um, can we record, yeah, in a sentence that starts with the town under its complete streets policy, under its existing complete streets policy, so they don't think that we put this policy in after the negotiation?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Good. But then we've got existing sidewalk.
Uh, extend the town sidewalk further up school street.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So take out its existing and put in the town.
Yeah.
Right before sidewalk, Eli.
Oh.
Yes.
So, yep.
Yep, town sidewalk.
Uh, okay, is town sidewalk capitalized there, and then the last word in the sentence it is not?
Yeah, it's a different, because the town, right, is the possessive sidewalk, whereas it's not, and.
Well, I don't know, possessive is.
No, I see what John's talking about is consistency with town, town, it shows up three times in the sentence. I would make the town sidewalk lowercase.
Yeah.
And, and in the initial one, it's the town administration, government, et cetera.
At the end, we could search for town and see what we've done here. Because in the sentence up above, it says the town under its existing complete streets policy.
That's the same sentence.
Yeah, it's the same sentence, and it's a little funky with the town sidewalk and the town.
Do what you like. I'm, I'm becoming agnostic on that.
Yeah.
It's the town will extend its sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
Okay, the sidewalk, fine.
Okay, we're moving on.
Yeah.
I like that one.
Indent.
That one's pretty straightforward.
Okay, um, the few jobs is plural, so the apartment complex, um, running the apartment complex are.
Yeah, you're right. Increase, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Good?
Good.
Yep.
So both the underlying phrases have to be.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yes or no?
Lowercase.
Be on the audio, right?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Increased job and lowercase, lowercase and, I think we're close enough to, to consistent.
Uh, that, that, that was at a request for. was that a request for an edit or?
No, 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 that's, that's noting that we have not capitalized worker words.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, what are the many more opportunities aside from a solar array on top of the building?
Well, it is the highest point. It could be they could do a wind turbine perhaps.
On this down. Well, actually, yes, you won't have to pay attention to the laws.
Maybe we ought to say other than any more.
They, they couldn't under a lot of different uh, aspects of town regulations, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we could say state, uh, to many more opportunities to advance the state's goals of maximizing energy efficiency and supporting.
Uh, I, I don't, I understand, Greg. I don't want to complicate that. I just think we, we need to be careful about overextending our reach. Um, and, and, um,
Could we just, could we just?
It is missing more opportunities, just to.
Yeah, just more or other opportunities.
Or other, yeah.
But, uh, you know, many, I can't put a list of ten to twenty things down there.
Or how about just say it is probably opportu- opportunities.
Missing opportunities.
Yeah, uh, but, I mean, ground, um, oh, what's it called? Geothermal.
Mm hmm.
Where are you gonna get geothermal?
Yeah.
You're gonna drill down for it.
Just rock right there.
We just talked about, we don't want them to disturb the natural environment.
Drilling is less than plastic. Anyway, go ahead.
Can we just take out many more?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Mm hmm.
Yep.
Uh, take out.
Why would you take out many?
I'd take out many more if we're gonna take out out of here.
Fine. Fine.
Good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next paragraph.
I would, at the last sentence, I'd break that into two sentences where it says mass housing should disregard. I'd make that a, an additional sentence. So period after planning and take out the word and. Nope, wrong place, below.
Before mass housing.
Before mass housing, the, 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 the last statement is a strong statement should stand alone. It doesn't need to be part of a compound sentence.
Could we put in not far away on the fringe? Something that emphasizes that point that it's not near the existing community center.
So not far from.
Near?
No, no, leave it. And I would take out the comma.
Yep.
Take out the comma?
I don't.
No.
Hmm. I, I think it's there.
Yeah, I think the comma is there.
And here where it says the, I leave, I'd leave the comma, where it says the proj- project proposes threats to town drinking water supplies. Again, I would reiterate to the headwaters of fifty percent of the towns, or, you know, approximately fifty percent.
No, just, just to fifty percent of the town's drinking water supply.
And then capitalized towns, apostrophe S, of the town drinking water supplies or the town's drinking water supply?
I don't know what to do.
Take out the and just have of town drinking water supply.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Uh huh.
Support, yeah, yep.
And, and you could perhaps, Becky, put in parentheses after supplies.
I think it's good.
Cedar Swamp is a feeder into Sawmill Brook, which provides half of the town's drinking water through a well system.
Now I think we're getting into the, uh, enclosures.
Uh huh.
That's that's pretty detailed.
Where we go.
Sorry.
Where are we?
Right here.
Mm hmm.
You want me to add to this then?
No.
No. No.
Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Yes, and I would not indent this last paragraph.
Right. Right.
Right. This paragraph good?
Uh, you want to make bold that first, first sentence, the first eight words or whatever it is.
Oh, what? Oh, I was referring to this one. Good with this paragraph?
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. No, that we're okay with that.
All right.
I, I have one question, and again, on that, on that one, it's just where it says, we're not asking for anything more than the objective application of mass housings. And I'm wondering, could we use another phrase other than application since SLV is the applicant? Does that mean, how about the objective, um, objectivity of mass housing or something? Or do we just leave it?
Here, um, or where?
The word application before of mass housing. I'm just, I mean, I mean, maybe I've just found.
Uh, if you want to change it to, I understand the confusion. You might say assessment.
What's the problem with application?
You're applying oaths.
Yeah, you're applying their principles to the.
Yeah, their tenants. It's really not bad.
I, I got that. Okay, never mind.
You could change it to more than objectively applying.
Well, that's, that's what I was wondering, but I don't, if, if everybody's happy with it as it is, then don't change.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Now you take out the.
Sorry about that.
I like the the.
Mm hmm. I do too, if we're gonna leave it as is.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so we're okay with that, um, sentence there. Any section one?
Uh huh, uh huh.
Do we underline sustainability development principles?
Um.
Ah, yes. Since we did all the others.
Yep.
Or put them in bold, as we did previously, I think.
I think the, the others, we just had capitalized and underlined.
Yes, but this is the overarching set of principles.
Yeah.
Is that?
Maybe bold and underline.
On the first page.
On the first page, we're using them as headings.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, actually, go to, go, go way up to the top.
No, no, it's right here, John. It's right.
There, right, well, number one, well, number one, uh, the first number one, I was looking at. Go up a little more. And what did, what did we do to that? Right there, one. Mass housing, sustainability, develop, it's in a, in a sentence, and that's the way it looks.
Right, but when we get into it, we bolded it. So as we exit, do we want to bold it?
I think, I think you have to treat them, both of them, the same way.
No, we, we did, we were, the bolding was really to make this.
To make it, it was because it was the heading, not because it was sustainability development principles. Because it was part of a heading.
All right.
So we leave it as it is, so.
Right.
Or are we underlining it? No?
No, we're not, we're not doing anything.
Well.
Okay, okay.
So then am I under, un- underlining?
Can I make, can I make a suggestion for process, Eli?
Yeah.
Should we take public comment on everything in number one?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, just about to do.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, um. Sandy, you had your hands up.
Yeah, this was just a, um, suggestion. You were, um, working on the transportation. Um, due to its isolated location and being perched on a steep hilltop, the only option is personal transportation. Um, you might have motorcycles, whatever, but it's really focusing on personal transportation, so it might make that cleaner.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Yep.
Or bicycle, or whatever.
Yeah, just not a bicycle.
Just not a transport.
Down, down, Eli, top of the next page. Where we had personal automobile.
So it says, uh, after, on a steep hilltop, the only option is personal transportation.
Um, but it says the only transportation option.
Yeah, but if you're saying personal transportation, so you can just say the only option is personal transportation.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I, I think automobile is more clear, but.
Yeah, but it's just right, could be motorcycle, I mean.
Yeah, well. It could be.
So the personal, personal transportation is the only option?
Yeah, I like it, on a steep hilltop, the only option is.
No, no, I like the answer's language.
First, the.
Okay.
Honestly, the o- only the person, yeah.
Due to its isolated location, being perched on a steep hilltop, personal transportation is the only option.
So you put a comment there, yeah.
Mm hmm.
And the other question is sustainability does not have to do with, um, in, um, resource sustainability. That's in another section?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, yes, it is, yeah.
That's what I thought. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
All right. Moving on, item two?
Yeah.
All righty, so, um, this we're treating as bolded.
Mm hmm.
And probably capitalize local and zoning.
And probably our.
And dump our.
Huh?
Isn't this phrase from their standards?
No.
No, this is, we're off their standard.
We're done. This is, uh, our own language.
Why don't we just take out the or on general principles? Who else's local zoning would we care about?
Yeah.
I like that.
I would take out the or in front of LCD and put an open parentheses.
Are you okay with this change?
Mm hmm. Yes.
Uh, sorry, uh, go ahead, Jeff. Take out the.
Um, housing production plan is actually what that's called.
Yeah, singular.
I would take out the, in the next, at the end of the next sentence, I would take out the or in front of LCD and open parentheses.
Two levels of parentheses?
Yeah, we got two levels of parentheses there.
How about just a slash?
We don't even need the LCD. We, we, oh, okay, we, yes.
Yep.
Uh, actually, take out the initial parentheses at that, before the hence. Put in a comma. And um, after limited commercial district, paren- open parentheses LCD.
Yep. But the period has to go outside of that, right?
You got it.
Oh, nicely done.
Eli's really fast.
He is.
And very patient.
That we know.
Is that a double space? Never mind.
What, after the period?
Uh, after natural areas period, yeah.
Yeah, there is a double space there. I'm one of those people.
Actually, word, um, at the end of sentences automatically provides an extended space for a single space, but go ahead.
And isn't it principal, not principal, principle?
Uh.
Under towns, principal drinking water well?
Oh, it is, I got the wrong one.
Well, the principal might.
I know, that should, that should be AL.
Yeah.
It should be AL.
Mm hmm.
Uh, scrolling up a little bit here. So, uh, are people good with this first paragraph?
Take out the, take out the the in front of high density.
Uh, either a the za or an a, uh, to grant high density residential use. Oh, okay, I guess it works.
All right, good?
Uh huh.
I wouldn't, I would take out the parentheses.
Yeah. Uh.
Comma, de- development comma, not including.
Same particle.
Mm hmm. Should we emphasize the word not including this parcel? And, and, and as opposed to this proposed forty B. I don't, I don't. No?
No.
Okay.
I'm wondering whether the last sentence in this paragraph is add something.
I, 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 I tie, I do like that because it does, it, it can potentially thwart real efforts towards affordable integrated housing.
Uh, but the last part of the sentence, okay, but the first part is kind of redundant.
I, I think, I think that, uh, we take that sentence and reduce it to this proposed forty B project is counter to these efforts.
Yep.
And then wipe the rest of that sentence out.
You don't want to say just the opposite of this. That's, I don't think that adds up a lot.
It's, it's a little bit weak when you, when you use this. So is, is counter to these efforts is my suggestion. And, and take it, yeah. Anne?
That's fine. And I, I would like to leave new efforts we're pursuing, or maybe take out the new.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yep. Do we want to include, though, that the example of what one landowner is wanting to do over there?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a different view.
I get that.
So I would take out these and put currently between we and our to efforts we are currently pursuing.
I don't know. We need that last phrase to begin with. I mean, that's what we set up on top. We're talking with this guy.
Where? Where we said it?
Landowner is working with the town on plans. That's what he's doing. So we're currently talking with him.
So just this and these efforts and.
These efforts, I would just say these efforts, period.
I think you're right. Oops.
Yeah, because we have pursuing in previous sentence.
Yep.
Good.
Good. All right, item number two is done. Any members of the public comments on item number two here? All right. Three. We have no heading here unless we want to turn this into a heading.
I.
For consistency, we should.
Yep. Yep. We gotta turn it into a heading here.
Right.
When was the Affordable Housing Trust funded?
No.
Starting in seventeen, I believe, twenty seventeen.
And is that when the trust was?
It was established in sixteen, it was established in sixteen, and I think the following year we funded it, started funding it.
So we should, but it's, it's good to note that the afford of the trust was started, you know.
No.
Yeah, several years ago. Yep, good.
So I don't know, does the heading going to say diversification of Manchester's housing stock?
It reads better as a sentence.
Mm-hmm. But we could just leave it as a sentence, and that's fine.
Um, I would like to consider voters approved the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust in two thousand sixteen and have been providing substantial funding since then.
I, I think, I think you're right, Anne. I would say since its inception in two thousand sixteen, and end the sentence, and don't, don't put in anything else about it.
Yes, all you have to do is at the very end, Eli, put since its inception in two thousand sixteen.
Oh, no, no, he's, he's done it fine.
Okay.
Just put it in in two thousand.
Since its inception, period.
It can, it's inception in. You know, the bottom line in that whole paragraph is that Mass Housing will point to our SHI and say, you don't show this on your SHI.
Say that again?
I mean, the, I'm thinking about counters to all of this, and they will say, this doesn't show any sustainable housing inventory.
You, you could say, we, we anticipate updating our SHI soon with these.
Let's keep it out of the, let's keep it out of it.
Why?
I mean, it's addressed in the next paragraph.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Yep, okay.
You might end that paragraph where we will update our sustainable housing inventory.
This one?
Imminently.
I, imminently doesn't, why don't, we've, we've said that they're deed restricted to serve low-income residents. It would be nice. At some point, just to, to, I guess the first paragraph is fairly clear that the project that the Affordable Housing Trust is involved with is large and complicated and isn't going to happen overnight. Um. But.
I think it's, it's very thin ice to say that this twenty-nine unit complex will be a hundred percent deed restricted to serve low-income residents.
It will be at some point. We just don't know when.
It could be years.
But they are, it is, it is, it is, because it's being done by North Shore CDC. It's, it's, at least according to Mickey, every unit will be.
Yes, but he has no plan for that. He doesn't have a specific adoption plan other than, other than vacancy.
Well, he does, he does. I've spoken, have you spoken with him recently, Jeff?
Not, not, no, not since before the negotiations ended with SOV.
Okay, I, I think perhaps we might want to, because I, and I would leave that it's going to be one hundred percent deed restricted.
Would you be happy with changing the will be to is anticipated to be?
Yes, yes.
No, I, I, I think if we believe what we voted for, what, what, not we voted for, but what, what I think it will be. I mean, it's not now. But unless North Shore CDC decides to go back on its word, it will eventually be a hundred percent.
Right.
Right, but from MHA's point of view and from the SHI's point of view, that, that eventually may be years.
That's true, and.
But it will be.
Will be.
Will be.
Yeah, they will certainly look at that and say, will be is not is. But I think that it's a good point to make, and, and I think it's well stated.
All right, so we leave, leave out any reference to the SHI then?
Mm-hmm.
A hyphen between twenty-nine and unit, Eli?
The copy says restricted to serve low-income residents. Is that a definition? Or, because we're dealing with affordable housing, but I'm not sure low-income residents, if that's a different definition.
Well, you can put it back in as what was in there before, which was below sixty percent AMI.
I don't think we should get into percentages. We should just say it's affordable housing, whatever the cutoff is.
Restricted to affordable housing.
Right, I just.
Restricted to housing, affordable tenants, no.
No, leave it, leave it the way it is. I mean.
I think so, too. Yeah.
I, I, is low-income resident, is low-income, that's a definition for housing, and I'm worried about when you say low-income residents, that's for low-income housing. That's, that's the concern that I have.
Oh, I see.
You know, because low income is a different category of housing.
You're right, you're right.
If I just say affordable housing, we know what the story is, and there's some leeway there.
Hundred percent deed restricted to affordable housing.
Right.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Yep, good.
All right, second thing, I would put in a parenthetical phrase at the end of this paragraph that says, note the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust letter. That is one of the attachments here and is not referred to anywhere else in this letter, yet it is an attachment, and it does address this.
Well, shouldn't that go to the paragraph above then?
No, because the above was, is the planning board letter, and that's, that's the broader program. The Affordable Housing Trust specifically has a paragraph that deals with this. The planning, planning board letter does not.
Yeah, and the Affordable Housing Trust letter specifically discussed the AMI.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll put that in here, and it's the only reference for it, but I think it's an appropriate spot for it.
So.
So use the same.
Note the planning, note, note the.
No, note the, just like above, parentheses, note the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust letter attached, attached.
But not underlined.
That, that's just traction.
I don't know how to use this.
The attached Manchester Affordable Housing Trust.
Letter attached.
Right. Yeah, just say letter attached.
Attached.
That's good.
For more details.
Well, of course, that's why we're telling them to go there.
Good?
Yes.
Yep.
Last paragraph of item number three, and then we'll take a couple of public comments.
Be near unanimous.
Yeah, that was near. I'm not sure how.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're working with a different version.
I mean. No. I'm not sure about this word.
Recommended that?
Yeah.
Advised?
Not advised, I think.
Requested?
Advised is fine.
Advised or requested, yeah.
Or requested.
Requested.
That? No, requested the select that.
That.
You don't need that.
Okay.
We are not legally a select board.
Oh, that's right.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, that's to come to you in a
Fall meeting.
Fall meeting.
In some other century.
No? No?
No, why not now?
As Alan put it last night, in a town meeting, soon to come to you.
Exactly.
No.
Oh, damn it.
Uh-oh.
Sorry.
We go still.
Unhappy kitty?
Dog problem?
Out of that or a big spill, one of the two, bark and cat.
Could be both.
Um, Eli, Sustainable Development Principles isn't, is principles, a capital P, kind of in the middle of that paragraph, yeah.
I.
Also by a unanimous, a near.
It was not a unanimous vote, it was a near.
By a near, a near.
Right.
I think, how about we just additionally?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I the SLV is, because of its choice of location, that's what, you know, I, I want to emphasize that people are not objecting to affordable housing. The objection is the location. And scale?
Uh.
Or scope, I, I, it just.
You have a question?
Uh, no, not so far.
Is that Sheila?
Gail.
Uh, am I?
Hi, Gail.
Hi, Becky, you had a question?
Oh, I have many questions, but no.
I think she was saying the word scale, and you heard Gail.
Ah, there we go.
Oh. I'll answer to anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you for being with us, Gail.
Minutes for this meeting?
Yes, and its impact, I like that, to or how about its threat to our, our water resource?
I, I, I wouldn't get involved with any of that, Eli.
Yeah.
Because, because this letter is all about everything that's involved there, and of course, we're going to a parenthetical phrase saying, seeing the attached letter from SEMA, which says, here are all of the reasons, so.
Right, but I, I.
I wouldn't put that in there. I just say, they, their opposition to the proposed project, see the letter, over seven, you know, see the letter, over seven hundred, maybe ought to say, see the letter right away, comma, over seven hundred residents signed a petition.
But I, I, I just think it's, I understand, see the letter, but I think, you know, just in terms of kind of pinpoint clarity.
You got six things, you got six things, you got six, it's the first page, it's all of them.
Okay.
The, the.
All of them.
The article reads, the proposal's threats to life, health, and safety of residents throughout the town and of wildlife honor near the parcel. I think that that's not going to be gain any traction with the MHA.
Those, those comments are not, no.
So I, I agree with John.
Okay.
So leave it like it is here.
Okay.
Yep.
Um.
It's got two parenthetical statements here.
Putting in over.
I'm just wondering if you can't put them in one, yeah.
As well as, comma, as well as.
Done it fine, I can, you can have, I guess, two sentences in one parenthetical phrase, that's fine.
Um. I think that for clarity's sake, you need to put prior to the town, our, our annual town meeting, seven hundred residents signed a petition. Or over seven hundred residents. When, when did that actually?
Uh, just say earlier this year.
I like that.
Yes, John, that's good.
Earlier this year. Earlier this year.
I just want to separate it from the start of this paragraph.
I agree, it's not like we rushed.
Meeting.
Like we rushed out and got.
Residents there.
Yeah, we didn't rush out and get 700 names.
Right.
There's no comma, I don't think.
Mm-mm.
Good?
Yep.
I'm good.
All right, so, Alex, comment? Somebody, somebody on the board was just about to catch something.
Yes, in the note, the attached letter from SEMA, which gathered the signatures on the citizen petition. So that becomes the authority about that petition.
I don't know, yeah. For parallel structure, above we said, it was note, blah, 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 the attached letter. Here we've got the attached letter from blah, blah, blah. I don't know if it's, uh, that just bothers me a little bit. I know it bothers Anne probably a little bit because she's into parallel structure. Right?
Okay.
Okay, no, no, note, the attached petition from SEMA.
All right, well, above we said, above we said, note the planning board letter attached.
Right, but, but the petition itself lists, lists all 700 people.
That's, yep.
So is it just the petition, or the petition and a letter?
Yeah, it's, it's the letter.
It's both, but we're referring to the petition here, and that's where I think we should send them, so.
Okay, you're citing it, okay, I get, that's what you're citing, okay, thank you.
Good now?
Good.
Yeah, Jeff, don't, don't you want to say, and accompanying letter there, because the letter is.
I agree, I agree with you, they're going to look at the accompanying letter or not.
Yes.
Um, but the 700 signatures are there.
Yeah, note the attached petition from SEMA, and it's.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to undermine the letter, but I think it's too much language, and it dilutes the impact of 700, over 700 residents.
Well, you've got it there, and it's accompanying letter.
All right, done with that paragraph?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yes, if you're, are you attaching the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust letter?
Yes.
I would like, I would like to have my name redacted.
You, yes, you're to request that your name not be on there, because you're going to be, you're on the zone of the board.
Thank you.
Good point.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Sandy.
Yes, in a couple places, the word smaller projects, I would recommend saying projects, especially when you consider one of those smaller projects is a 29-unit, and if 100% of that is going to be eventually affordable, that's near what they're suggesting. So I think smaller takes away from it. The use of smaller projects is used in the first paragraph and in the second paragraph. The other thing I would recommend is, what the town is pursuing is more integrated and appropriately scaled types of projects for the town. So I think that integrated, I think, is very critical. I think that gets to, I think, Becky, what you were trying to get to with respect to location. So I don't know, wordsmithing or whatever, but integrated, I think, is a good word. So anyway, those are two things that catch my eye, that I think will be important and important for the citizens that are backing these projects.
I agree, if we were to use other appropriate and integrated.
Integrated, comma, appropriately scaled projects.
Mm-hmm. Well, not even just scaled, but appropriate. The project itself is appropriate more than just scale.
Exactly, yeah, I think you can say scale, yeah. So, yeah, there's two different places at least.
Appropriate, I'm sorry to say that I feel appropriate is very vague. We've, we've referred to the scale of this project as being out of character with the town. And I think that we're, we're trying to highlight the integration of the smaller projects. And I agree with you, getting the word smaller out of there, because it diminishes the effort.
Yeah, yeah. No, I see what you're saying, Jeff, you're, you're.
But, but appropriate is, is a pretty vague.
Mm-hmm.
That is pretty vague.
Appropriately scaled, I think, is, is better. I understand what you're trying to understand, and I think it's a good thing. But.
One of the other, one of these, okay.
Yep. Good find.
Good with that?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on. Item number four.
Boy, we're roaring here.
You need, you need a period after four, for consistency.
And I need to undo what I just did with respect to holding the four.
I would take out if nothing else.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Going a little bit.
The $550,000 is his number?
Hey, you take the 75 million in his pro forma, divided by the 136 units, and you get over 550,000.
I would say, based on the applicant's pro forma, the per-unit cost is more than 550,000.
Yep, using the applicant's own info, that's, yeah.
All right, then you don't need the blast part of that sentence, which says, even when using a very low costs per square foot estimate. It's whatever his estimate is, because that's the number we're using.
Well, I guess the point, though, is that.
He used a low cost.
He's, he used a low cost, and he's still coming up with an extremely high.
Okay, so I think you can leave that part of the sentence in there, I just throw in at the beginning, based on the applicant's.
Yeah, but you have to say which, which is using a very low cost, although that's our, that's our judgment, I guess.
So that, the, the, the planning board letter elaborates on that a bit?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah.
And you could put it into parentheses, even when using.
Mm-hmm. Don't put it in parentheses. Put a comma after 55, yeah.
Does any, the, the, the high-flying investors, would there be any other more appropriate term than high-flying? Or is that, do you all like that?
You, you really don't need that sentence at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would take, I would take that out, the whole sentence.
Yep, yeah.
Because he can say, I've got the investors, period.
Mm-hmm.
And, and instead of an unfeasible proposition, a financially unsustainable position.
Is it unsustainable, or?
It's a proposition, it's not a position.
Proposition's fine.
Realistic.
Is it unattainable, or unsustainable?
I'm using that language very specifically, because he has used that language with us to say, I can't do that, it's financially unsustainable.
Okay, there you go.
Or financially infeasible. And it should be a financially, not a.
Right.
Thank you.
Is that sentence that follows, is that add anything? I think that's. Unless there can be no finding that the project is financially viable. I, I would take that out.
I, I, I don't know, I kind of like that we're pointing out the site, because when you talk about the, you know, the, the amount.
Good, the last sentence is good.
But the last sentence depends.
On the previous sentence.
On the previous sentence.
Right.
I, I think it's fine to repeat yourself. On this particular point, I think it's fine.
Would you?
Yeah, I like that.
Just further indicating.
Yeah, it's a little.
Mm-hmm.
Demonstrating.
Yep.
I don't like the word in the last, last paragraph, where it says, but we know that mass housing knows that the Housing Appeals Committee never finds in favor. We can't say that, because later on in the letter, we talk about, was it Ames, not Amesbury, or the town, later where the, um.
Well.
They did find.
Later on, that refers to finding on safety, right?
Yes.
Yes, but to say that, that, you know, the, the, the sentence there just simply says, never finds.
And, and I think that was, that particular sentence, I think, was written by John Witten.
Yeah.
Who happened, who probably knows.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't like saying to mass housing what they know.
I, I don't either, thank you, John, Jeff. It's one thing to say we understand, you know, that the, the mass housing's position at this stage, et cetera. Is that poking the bear, or is that effective? I mean.
Well, how about if we just did this?
And get, get rid of the but.
Where did "never" come from?
John Witten.
Yeah, I'm not sure we need this paragraph at all.
What's that?
I'm not sure we need this entire paragraph.
Yeah, I think we should cut the paragraph out, take the last parentheses, and put it up on our previous paragraph. Excellent, right there.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah.
Done?
Yep.
Yep.
Any comments to the public on section four?
Uh, how do I raise my hand?
Moving on to five, environmental.
I think Rick Rogers wants to say something.
I'm sorry, I was supposed to raise my hand, so, um, yeah, that whole section four, I, I just kind of question the direction it goes. Again, I think mass, mass housing's not going to care, right, but I wonder if there's a spin here in terms of the feasibility, because what I think you could state is that there's, there's going to be no opportunity for someone to change the scope of this project, right? So when you're making other arguments about no sidewalks and the amount of blasting, whatever else, they're not going to be able to take on more expense to try to make this thing work, right? And that, that is a concern, because if they're, if they're going to argue against some of your points, then, then financial feasibility becomes a stop. Does that make sense?
That, that is part of it, but also, it calls into question the pro forma that the developers put forth, and whether or not the, the overall application is sufficiently well-formed, and whether or not mass housing should reject it as a result.
Okay.
Ready to move on to item five?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Rick.
Environmental degradation, bolded.
Sarah, mute yourself.
Exactly, sorry.
Uh, M E T C is M E C T, last line of the first paragraph.
Yeah.
Oh.
Metz.
And it's trustees of reservations, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, they might be trustees of reservation as well, but.
If we're going to say bye before, I think we have to say bye here, right?
Mm-hmm. Do we reiterate here, again, 50% of the town's drinking water supply, drinking supply, or do we have, we, we've said it twice. Do we need to reiterate?
And we also should not be having this word here like that.
No, no.
It's, Cedar Swamp is not actually the headwaters of the town's drinking supply. It's a filtration area. The headwaters of Sawmill Brook actually are on the other side of 128, and it comes under 128, goes through Cedar Swamp, and then comes back. Not that the MHA is going to really care about that, but that is.
It's good to be, yeah, no, we need to be accurate.
It, it's referred to in a video that the, just the.
Green Team?
Yeah.
Not the Green Team.
The Stream Team.
Stream, stream.
I'm sorry, Stream Team, thank you, Rick. Um, made, that it's a filtration system.
Just to say it serves, serves the town's drinking supply well, I think that's okay, you don't have to say, what, in what way?
Or it serves, serves as an important part of the town's drinking supply.
Essential.
Part, yes, it's essential.
And essential.
All right, just say, it is an essential part, you don't have to say serves then.
So, yeah.
Isn't it?
Yeah, it is an essential part.
Drinking supply, we don't need, yeah. Drinking supply, we don't need, yeah, and then oven that need to be separated.
I, I think the well needs to be in there.
Drinking supply well?
Yep.
That's incredibly awkward.
Yeah.
All right, then take out drinking supply and, and put in the town's well. Drinking well, whatever.
We should all be drinking well.
Are the town's well that supplies 50%?
Yes, we do need to reiterate.
Essential part.
Of the town's well that supplies 50% of water to residents.
No comma before that.
Yes, you're right, Ann.
I had a very picky English teacher.
Would that be Warner?
I was going to add a new sentence. Here as well.
Of drinking water for residents.
They don't need residents, drinking water, period. We know what it is.
No, I want to keep people, I want to keep people in front of this, John.
Drinking water, people drink water.
But it's not just for residents, okay? Haven't we, and I mean, there are times that we've. Helped other towns, but I.
Not with our well.
Okay.
Yeah, Greg, what were you talking about adding?
So after this sentence, after the vernal pools. It was something that came out of the. Concombs work. So the applicant's wetland consultant stated, quote. Free wetland areas within the site contain the. I can send this to you. Contain the necessary biological and physical criteria for certification as vernal pools.
Contain the necessary what?
Contain the necessary biological and physical criteria. For certification as vernal pools.
Greg, is this going to be in the letter that, from them that we do not have yet?
I, I don't know. I don't know if it will be or not.
Okay.
But that's good to have in there.
I'd like to back up a little bit. A town well that supplies the drinking water. I'd put a period and start a new paragraph and say, in addition, Cedar Swamp, the, in addition. Yeah, right.
I wouldn't do a new paragraph.
Where did number six?
Because this, this, that sentence, Anne, refers to the sentence before at the site of adjacent parcels containing significant wetlands.
Okay.
And I agree with you, it's a run-on and kind of awkward sentence at this point, we need to, we need to fix it.
Okay, then let's, let's back up and put it in the same paragraph. Cedar Swamp also hosts. Or the.
Something terrible just happened and I'm going to.
I'm sorry.
Yes, six went away. Lost.
Interposed. Cedar Swamp also.
Hosts.
Mapped and unmapped vernal pools?
Don't know, well, that's what it said.
Contains.
No, it's not Cedar Swamp that does, it's the land area.
Yes, the surrounding area.
But it's Cedar Swamp, not Cedar Swap.
But Cedar Swap or Swamp does not host mapped and unmapped vernal pools. That's, that's, those are two different biomes, two different, not biomes.
Yep.
Yep.
Two different.
You can't have a vernal pool and a swamp because a swamp is wet all year round.
Right, well, sometimes.
Anyway, is this now?
Yeah.
And, and I might emphasize the sentence that Greg put in by putting the word own before wetland consultant.
Three, three what?
The applicant's own wetland consultant. Stated.
That three? Yeah.
Is that correct, Greg?
Yes.
And, and change stated to reported. That way you don't have to get into. Stated in his report or the awkward business of pronouns.
Okay. Last read on that paragraph? Andy, we're going to go all the way at end of five before I'm going to take public comment. This paragraph.
In this paragraph, I know we've included some of the numbers from last night, but. Can we include the over 11,000 truckloads, large truckloads of, of rock that will be, that Jay Bothwick mentioned?
We, we, we are flying by the seat of our pants to accept that as fact.
Yeah, we don't even know they're taking anything away.
And they could distribute.
They really, they really need to do a cut and fill to get as much area as they can. It gives you a sense of the volume, but there's no, no, no suggestion anything's going to leave the, leave the site. Boy, that would be expensive if they're hauling all of that away.
I would take out its fronts and put in frontage.
Oh, the public road, it's frontage?
No. From the public road frontage.
Okay.
I, I don't like each fronts.
Okay, how about, because from the public road?
Okay, but, yeah, okay. One more space there, Eli.
Yep.
I don't want to delete it.
No. Forced to a bad.
I'm just wondering about the language after blasting, it says whose impacts, whose refers to in general, a person. The copy before said, this is a huge amount of blasting and that as a statement alone has some impact, so I just put a period after that. And then just start the next sentence with impacts very, are very likely to alter the water flow. So I just take out whose and make it two sentences.
I'm sorry, where are yours, Frankie?
Yeah, that's right, there is a huge amount of blasting, yeah.
And we're saying that on what expertise? That it's going to alter water flow?
May, well, it says it's very likely to alter water flow when you're talking about removing, you're denuding.
Make water flow uphill, but on what expertise do we say that? We don't have the expertise. We use him of not having the expertise in our regional planning. What expertise do we have in this?
I don't know where that information came from.
Yeah, so I think we have to be careful about that.
But, but, but when you change the topography, which you obviously do when you blast away 40 feet of hilltop, you will change the flow of water.
Right.
I don't think it picks a lot of, I, I don't need a PhD in geomorphology to. To come to that conclusion.
I agree.
How about, this is a huge amount of blasting, period. The impacts are likely to alter.
Yeah, I take out very, that's, you know, that's not. That makes it.
Likely to alter the water runoff?
Water flow, runoff is flow.
So we're saying the impacts are, are like, are very likely to alter water flow, are likely to.
See, it confuses me because we're talking in the previous paragraph about Cedar Swamp and, and other water around it.
Okay, how about water flow off the site?
Runoff.
I would say runoff, because runoff also is not necess, I mean, it's not. From that site, it's not going to be a good thing into the, into the water.
I don't think we can comment on that one way or the other, it's going to change water flow, I agree with Greg, things are going to change, how they're going to change? We don't know. But they're going to change.
What I'm saying is water flow is vague because we're talking about large bodies of water like Cedar Swamp, is the blasting going to affect that? No.
No, water flow from the site.
We don't know.
We know that it's going to change from the site.
Yes, yes.
That makes it more specific than saying we're going to change the course of, of.
Okay, water flow from the site.
Or on this, from the site.
I, I just like alter water flow, I didn't even know, the water may never leave the site, we don't know that.
Well, if it doesn't leave the site, then we don't have a problem.
Well, we have concerns about what, what's happening in the environment on the site as well as around the site.
We spent a lot of time in our negotiations talking about runoff and water flow off of the site. I think we need to.
Runoff in the next paragraph.
How about we just say the impact?
Just leave it as water flow.
Just leave it, just leave it as.
Leave it as water flow. But there's also another blasting thing that's not mentioned here, and that is. Impact through ledges to other areas, close, adjacent areas of the town. And 128 and the school street bridge.
Exactly, the, I, that's, those are big concerns. Do we say that? I mean, we don't, we don't have any information, any studies as to what those impacts could be.
Get out a sentence, we are also concerned about.
The.
Collateral damage from the blast.
Yes, from the extensive blasting.
From such extensive blast. Possible collateral damage.
And are we a capital board?
Yep.
We don't want to say nearby residences because we've been.
I just say extensive blasting, period, just say extensive blasting, period.
Do it to justice?
Yeah.
I play it big, all right?
I guess we could say on the, on, on.
To roads, to roads, bridges. And highways.
Structures, how about roads, bridges and structures?
There are structures that are within the blasting radius.
Well, you talk about the doctor's office over there, the doctor's office, you know?
Yep, that's fine.
All right, good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Something. The, mention the large swath. Destruction, denuding, we need to clean that up a little bit.
Yeah.
Not to mention denuding a hilltop of all life.
So you have two separate sentences, the impacts are likely to alter water flow, period.
Yep.
Additionally, you know. Additionally, you know, what is additionally, or. There's also concern, but we're saying that.
I don't, I don't, I, I have concerns about that statement, what if they weren't doing any blasting? Taking a bulldozer. Well, I know, but in, but in any development, they take out everything.
Yep.
And they start all over, now whether you blast it to take it out, or you bring in a bulldozer. And everybody, it doesn't make any difference, so I, I would, I would take that. I don't think that sentence adds a whole lot.
I don't know, the, the, the denuding an entire hilltop is.
Yeah, but John's right, John's right, it has nothing to do with blasting.
Yeah, it's not blasting relevant, yeah.
Right, okay.
So this sentence now is, is.
A little, it's kind of lonely, isn't it?
Just changed, just change.
How about we go back to turning these two into one sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, how about doing the last two as one sentence?
And is likely to alter water flow.
Oh, yeah, okay, fine.
That's great.
Just and is likely to auto, you don't need impact. I don't think.
I think so, I agree, this is a huge amount of blasting and is likely to alter water flow. Or which will likely.
Is is really short.
Yeah. I think we stick with that, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Just additional.
Hydrology a better phrase than water flow?
Hydrology is very. That's, yes.
But we don't, do we have the hydrology expertise among ourselves to say that?
Well, we've been, we've.
Do we have a report that says that?
No.
Well, it's, how is it we're saying that about water flow as opposed to hydrology?
Because Greg said it was obvious.
Okay, let's, let's leave it at water flow and I, I'm not sure that we need an additionally if we remain in the next sentence.
Uh huh, I think we just say the board remains concerned.
Maybe impact ought to be singular, and maybe you say it's impact is likely.
I don't know, I don't mind the impacts because.
We're, we're dealing with one, one, one thing that we're looking at here, the water flow at this point.
The blasting, yeah.
Or are likely to involve, are likely to involve, if it's impacts.
The impacts are likely to involve.
Right, if it's impacts, there's other, then we're saying there's other stuff and it's true, there may be other stuff, but.
Okay, they're blasting a bunch of times, that's a bunch of impacts.
Leave it.
Yep, okay.
Won't it be controlling water runoff from the granite, blasted granite hilltop or denuded granite hilltop or, or changed granite hilltop?
The denuded hilltop is. Gone.
No, I'm in the next paragraph.
Yeah, I know. He's, he's saying that the, the, we shouldn't be emphasizing denuded.
No.
Happens on any construction site regardless.
Okay, but, but just saying it's water runoff from the granite hilltop will be very. Okay, I, I think that, that just, you know, it's maintaining itself right now. When it comes to being disturbed is when we are going to have problems with it.
Okay.
From the modified granite hilltop?
Disrupted.
Disrupted. I mean, do you do you see what I'm getting at?
Disrupted. Where does unnaturally warm?
Uh, that's from sitting on a parking lot in the sun and draining off and killing the cold water trout.
Wander.
I just think I I get what you're saying, Ann, but I think unnaturally warm does not convey what it is. Or the, could it be the overwarmed runoff water?
Heated. Um.
Do we need to?
You don't need it at all. You can just say.
No net gain in.
Yeah, it should be no net gain, but I I see what you're saying, and I I understand. I agree.
Um, and and the. At least. The M E C T. Um. Letter does explain what they mean, what that means.
At the end of this paragraph, we could refer to the M E C T.
Yeah.
Could, I I know.
You can do two sentences. You know, first you talk about the sediment laden runoff and also concerned about. Um, increased temperature of. Water runoff.
From paved surfaces.
From pa- yeah, from paved and constructed surfaces.
Uh huh.
Paved and constructed, yeah. Okay. The, there's also concern about.
Yep.
But the the temperature of the water has nothing to do with the drinking water supply.
But it does have to do with the endangered species in the vicinity.
I do, I I understand that. Um, but we're saying with critical water resources surrounding the site. It's imperative that no net gain and. Um.
That unnaturally, um, unnaturally warm runoff from paving and constructed surfaces will affect endangered spe- um. Threatened species.
Yeah, but that's not germane to this paragraph. Is it?
No.
Water runoff and it's causing environmental damage.
Right, so you can talk about two different damages, types of damages.
Right.
Everything so far in this section has been about the water supply, though.
So so it is imperative that there is no net gain and sediment laden runoff, period.
Uh huh.
I would take out the sentence about the warm, warm water runoff. Because we're emphasizing the town's drinking water here. And while I'd like to, I'm a fisherman, and I would love to. Emphasize. The plight of the endangered trout. Um. I think it's.
I think that.
I think it's out of place here.
Change. Well, where do we put it? Because we we have.
Say we should get rid of the trout because they're drinking our drinking water.
No, they're just going to.
It's not just drinking. It's not, they're not just drinking and.
I know, I'm I'm just.
But but.
Reaching, reaching nine fifteenish.
Yes.
Have we interspersed other kind of other?
That some extent.
You don't need to include everything because you're referencing the other letters. So the other letters talk about it. That's, that can be sufficient.
So what if we took that sentence and and put it on at the end?
Uh huh.
I mean, we're talking about waivers from wetland regulations, um, protection of water resources. It's a very important point, but it doesn't belong in this paragraph.
Yeah.
We could put in a short paragraph that said, separate from. The drinking water supply issues, there is also concern about unnaturally warm runoff from paved and constructed surfaces impacting locally endangered trout.
I think we ought to just park that there. I think we have to rearrange things. I'm looking at the paragraph. That even comes right out of this, right after this, and that's the paragraph that should kind of lead everything off because we're going back and we're saying drinking water is our most important. Factor.
Let's.
And all of a sudden, we're reverting back to that, so. Yeah, rearrange some thoughts.
Let's, let's, let's take out the the warm runoff altogether and and just focus on.
I'm fine with that. But. Um.
That paragraph, Eli. It's, it's like it should be the first paragraph.
Some aspect of it, yeah.
Yeah, the first three or four percent, not the, the last sentence deals with this forever chemicals. That doesn't belong there, but everything else really belongs. Up when we first mentioned Swedish Cedar Swamp, about five lines from the top.
I agree with John. We should switch the paragraphs.
Yeah, or or that first paragraph needs to be maybe two paragraphs, and you put this in between it or something.
Okay, so. Resource air in, starting with environmental degradation. Uh, sensitive resource area. And the rest of that is all. Oh, and then there's the water supply in the middle of it for. Eh, nope. I let, let's consider this last paragraph as a summation rather than. An introduction.
Well, if you take out the first sentence. You can do that.
But before Eli. Did you? Cut that sentence that you put in.
Yeah, but.
About the warm water?
Yep.
Or did you just delete it?
I cut it.
Excellent. Um, in the first paragraph, this area is the home to an array of rare and endangered species. For example. Concerns about warm water runoff and and trout could go there. So that's the sentence?
Yeah, and then.
For example, comma, and then control V. Impacting endangered fish species. Could impact endangered fish species.
There is concern. That.
And then we reference the M E C T letter, which picks that up. Does that help, Ann?
Yes, that's great.
Okay. And then I would take paragraph four and switch it with paragraph three.
Good?
Uh. Actually, seeing it there, I think it belongs where it was. Because the.
Yeah.
Natural transition between concerns about the massive amount of blasting. And controlling water runoff from the disrupted granite hilltop.
Yeah, I think you leave it where it was, Eli, and just take out the first sentence because it does become kind of a summary. If you start with protecting our drinking water is of paramount importance. Um. Pick out the first uh.
Uh huh.
Sentence, and that becomes kind of a a summary.
Yes, good. It's clean, John.
Yep.
All right.
And and um, take the most recent state mandated regulation regarding certain forever chemicals.
Eh. This is the time the state is on our side. Um, yes, it's 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 state mandated, but they're keeping us from, yeah, okay, fine.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Yeah, that that.
And then state mandated to siphon it.
Right, but I I think that statement or that that little section belongs someplace else. You want to close. With the the sentences that will allow us to continue to supply potable water to our community. That is a good ending sentence. That point with regard to the chemicals can be fitted in somewhere else further up. I'm not sure where.
Right before adding to our concerns. Is the fact that the applicant seeks waivers of twenty local wetland regulations. Um, I would put, take the most recent statement mandated regulation regarding forever chemicals and those two sentences and put it in there.
All right, let's see how that reads.
Uh, rather than take, consider, maybe.
Yeah.
I think I might stop after drinking water.
Um, it's also potable water, not portable water. Last sentence of the last paragraph.
Oh, yes.
And and a period got lost at the end of that paragraph. Okay.
Fine.
If these arguments have any any frame at all, that's a reasonable one.
Is it our aquifer or water supply?
Aquifer works here.
Uh huh. Okay. All right.
All right, that was a heavy lift. I think we're good.
I don't.
So, uh, you good with that, folks, or members?
Yes.
Yes.
I, um, especially in the first paragraph. There seems to be a bouncing a little bit between. What water resources are on the site versus surrounding the site. Um, you might want to take a read through and. I I don't know if legally there's more behind what's on the site versus surrounding. Um, but it it sort of bounces back and forth, and it's hard to follow. Uh, what critical resources are are there versus adjacent?
I think we wanted to cover the fact that there both of those were in play.
Yes, yes, definitely. And then directly adjacent is the Cedar Swamp um versus surrounding area because it could be. Conceived as a little bit more vague. It's just so critical that it's there. Um, but I would, I don't know, could just read through that. And see your clarification.
Saying, how about take out surrounding and just say the area?
Uh, I think the confusion comes up because that sentence about the applicant's own wetland consultant. Because that yanks it back into the site, and it's the only. Comment that is site specific. Everything else says this is what happens to the. Stuff around the site.
I think just take out surrounding.
Yeah, take out surrounding.
All right.
Critical that there is, there are. Um. Wetlands, vernal pools on the site.
Yes, and that's stated in the next sentence.
The site and the adjacent parcels, and then the area. Yeah, I guess that's vague enough. Um, just wanted you to make sure that you're taking advantage of the clarity. Thanks.
All right. So, um, Alan, you are, um, I'm gonna, if you have a a simple factual or observation to make here, I'll take it, but um. You're on a short leash. You're not a resident. And you're muted. You're still muted. That looks better.
No.
Nope.
No, it's not that.
There.
There.
Thank you. Alan McMillan, Rockport Conservation Commission. Several things stood up by here on the issue of Cedar Swamp. To me, the water supply is the most critical aspect of this whole thing. I would change part of near the beginning where it says Cedar Swamp. Is a significant and essential part of the town's water supply, supporting fifty percent of the town's municipal water system. That way you don't have to get into wells and all of that. Also, in terms of parking spaces and warm water, et cetera. Two hundred forty-two cars, I Googled while we're listening to this, um, what the square footage per parking space is standard state Massachusetts is. Three hundred twenty square feet per car with two hundred forty-two cars. That comes out to seventy-seven thousand four hundred forty square feet.
We can't, we can't be doing on the fly analysis here.
Well, I'm just, okay, all I want to say is the water supply is your most critical aspect of this whole thing. Getting into details about PFAS. Is not as important as emphasizing the loss of your water supply. I guess that's, that's, I'll say, I'll let it go there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other board comments on this paragraph? Moving on to six. All right, any other board comments on this paragraph? Moving on to six. All right.
Is there, in the second sentence, um, I, I, I would like to talk, rather than saying that no other access is possible, I'd like to tie that to something like according to the developer.
Yes.
Right. And it's, and it would be a, given the cost.
No, just, just according to the developer. I wouldn't get into cost.
Okay.
You just said no.
But it's, it's saying no other access possible is given, possible, given the extreme site constraints. So either you say extreme site constraints or not, but he's saying it's not possible because of the cost in dealing with the extreme site constraints.
I, I don't want to do his work for him. I think just saying according to the developer, no other access is possible.
Right, so take out given the extreme site constraints. No?
Yeah, I would take that out.
I would take out extreme. I wouldn't take that out.
Uh, yeah.
Yes, I like the addition of the qualification. Any other comments on this first paragraph?
Could you say not the nearly nineteen hundred feet as opposed to necessary? Hmm, or no?
It is necessary though.
Um, instead of proposed or the necessary in this ill-sighted project.
It's nine hun, it's, that's proposed. I'm okay with the way it's, it reads, but I think you ought to put feet after five hundred. You've got feet after nineteen hundred, and I think you ought to be consistent with how you're expressing feet.
So you either do the dash or the feet.
E- e- either the apostrophe or, or the fee, either one, but they, they should be.
Right.
I mean, what, you, us fees or fee?
No, uh, feet, the word.
Write it out.
Feet in.
Yeah.
John wants, John wants his feet in this sentence.
Yes.
Yep.
Two feet.
All right, this paragraph?
Is it possible to put into this, um, paragraph also that, that the developer himself acknowledged it would be less safe? Which he did with one access site point.
Uh, into which, into this one?
Yeah.
No, into the second pair.
Uh, put it, put it at the end, put it at the end of the first.
Yeah.
Which?
He did it when we were discussing with our, um, consultant, the, uh, the, the traffic engineer.
But this whole paragraph is built around that consultants.
This one is.
Right, that's why I was saying, put it in the second sen, second paragraph.
Yeah.
It is the second paragraph.
Right, she's
I, I'm arguing that you should put it at the end of the first paragraph, even just to, just to sort of slightly balance the paragraph. The second paragraph is um, complicated enough, just the developer acknowledges that a single point of access makes the project less safe.
I don't know if it was just the access. That discussion, as it occurs to me, was kind of a little bit of everything associated with the steepness too, wasn't it?
Fine, yeah, I thought so as well.
So in here then, or?
Yes.
In a public meeting, the developer acknowledged. We got the tape, right, Gail? Single access.
That the proposed. Yeah. It was, was less safe, right, yeah. Project less safe.
Just leave it there.
Mm hmm.
You want himself in there?
No.
Done with that paragraph, onto this one.
Should it be local initiative project approval? Should we be consistent as opposed to just saying local initiative approval? Is it local initiative?
Yes, I think project and lowercase approval.
Yeah.
Um, I would take out the comma and, and before if and when.
Are we still in here?
No, you went on to the next paragraph.
I did, but then we went back to this one.
Right.
So if and when?
I, I take out the and and comma before if and when utilities are extended.
How about just when the utilities are extended? Do we need it to say under the roadway? Get rid of a few words? Or just extended across one twenty-eight? Or beyond one twenty-eight?
Oh, yeah, under the roadway is an obscure reference for the Mass Housing Authority. Uh, I would say under Route one twenty-eight.
I don't know that we want to say under one twenty-eight. I would say beyond or past, yeah. Because we don't know if it's going to be under, over.
Yeah. Across. No, capital. But, yeah. I think, I think beyond is better than across because that's not the plan. It was going to go under and
Ross could be under or over.
Yeah.
But beyond covers both.
Anyway.
I like beyond, but we got to be on to across, Eli, flip the coin.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with across.
Yeah, beyond sense like, oh, we're going miles and beyond.
Yes, well, we are.
We're just trying, we're just trying to get it across one twenty-eight here.
No, 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 but we're talking, it is beyond. That's the whole point. This project is beyond.
We're in Essex.
Reach into the map article here and say beyond can also be longitudinally past the northern, uh, extent.
It's, it's going in lots of different directions.
So I like the
This meeting has gone beyond time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're almost there. You're almost, three more paragraphs.
We could get into the
Can you roll up a little bit, Eli, so we can see the signature line?
Uh, not that close. We're getting close, but
Thank you.
Okay, I can throw one page notes away. All right. Yeah.
We're, uh, actually, uh, we, we didn't say that we're done with this yet.
Correct.
Right. The isolated site needs all the help it can get to integrate into the community. Better integrate is a split infinitive, and you've got in into.
Mm hmm.
Wow.
Sorry, I used to teach this stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
No wonder you're so good.
So take out better and take out in. And I put a period there and say at a minimum the project needs sidewalk, sidewalks along the internal access road.
Mm hmm.
So make that a sentence, Eli. The pro, the project needs.
I don't know, is there a comma?
Yeah. I think the rest of that's fine.
Mm hmm.
All right.
Could we just say that, given the steepness of the site, comma, the necessary handicap accessible as opposed to saying a handicap accessible? Just saying, you know, the necessary one will be challenging and
He, he may go for a, a variance, uh, you know, on that.
Okay, okay.
You know, so we just say, we know handicap, that's what the deal is, but
Mm hmm, correct.
But anything could be built if he can get the appropriate waivers.
Okay, next paragraph?
This one here.
Yeah, there's a, there's an open parentheses before the number one. It should be either both open and closed and simple construction on number two. Or it just should, uh, be just following.
What, uh, so
Yeah, sentence. How about instead of one?
Yeah.
Uh, both aspects of public safety, comma, first, the ability, and second?
A double dash.
Yeah, sure, whatever. And first, the ability to respond, and second, the general safe access. And no, no parentheses. But what, okay, there we go. Is it second, the general safe access, or second, general safe access to and from the complex?
You've got first the ability, you got first the ability, so it should be second the general.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use first and second.
Well, take, take, how about taking out general? Or primarily, and then secondarily, no? I mean
Uh, primarily and secondarily, the order's in, in, in priority.
Correct, yep, I, yep, yep.
But I, I would, I would take out first, second, and general.
Mm hmm, okay.
And even the.
Would you do, okay, both that?
I wouldn't say in the safe access.
Yep.
And safe access, beautiful.
Mm hmm.
And once again.
Well, I think once again, we're, we're, yeah, and I thought you said take me out once again, okay.
Uh, no, read the sentence, and that and doesn't belong there.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, because that's, that's the verb.
Yeah, it does belong, yeah.
Aspects. I, I would take out the once again. Uh, no, I wouldn't, I'm sorry. I like the once again. I think you're, I think we're just, just once again, reiterating.
Is that a co, is that a comma after complex?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, good with that paragraph?
Yeah.
Yep. Who's whispering?
Nobody, did you know?
Okay.
Uh, is it the end had the same effective end? Does that mean had the same outcome?
Yeah, you could, you could say same outcome, that's fine.
Let, let's keep it a little more.
Okay. Um, at the third sentence, zoning board of appeals, period, that project rather than the project?
Yep. Uh, no, I think the is correct.
Okay. I didn't say it wasn't correct. I, it wasn't emphatic enough.
Yeah, I think it's okay.
You could say the Lexington Woods project.
That's long.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yep.
Any other edits on this paragraph?
Oh.
So.
Um, we're, we're ending up with our bang here, and to start out with, it is clear that, it is clear to us that
Oh, you want, uh, the
I would just start with the proposed site. In conclusion, the proposed site of this project is inappropriate and financially infeasible for the project to proceed. Common.
Is it unfeasible or infeasible? Both. Okay.
Um, yeah, I would take out of this project at the start, because you said the project at the end for the project to proceed. You've got project in there twice.
Mm hmm.
And maybe And maybe you put it in there the first time and take it out the second time or one or the other, but not both.
The proposed site is inappropriate. Sounds good to me.
I, I, I actually think that we should. Hammer home, hammer home two or three points here. The proposed site of this project is environmentally unsuitable. Financially unfeasible. And presents a danger to public safety.
Yep, I agree. Those three points need to be made and inappropriate is a nothing word.
It's too weak.
Okay. Is it, is it the site or the project that is financially unfeasible and?
The proposed project. Thank you, Ian.
Yeah, yeah. I, I prefer that because otherwise.
Yep, yep. So the proposed project.
Yeah.
And I, I would like to start off with the safety concern. Then the environmental concern and finish with unfeasible.
You mean financially unfeasible?
Correct.
And corrections to these conditions would make it financially unfeasible.
How about we take out that, take out that sentence and, and go to the, directly to the next sentence. In conclusion, if built. Would a danger its own right residents.
Yep. Yeah, we don't, you're right.
No, I wouldn't say if built. I would just say in conclusion, the sanctuary.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
It's okay, yep.
Or the proposed sanctuary.
It, it also puts at risk not, it's not just its own residents, but, but emergency personnel.
Its own residents and emergency personnel, sure.
Yep.
Fail to provide integrated diverse housing.
Okay.
And as far as the sanctuary Manchester by the sea benefiting, no one, it benefits the developer who gets the developers' commission. And that comes out of the finance, the financial.
Not, not if he can't get it financed.
Uh, diverse.
That's all he needs to do is get it financed.
He could have money and he could have people who have been hoodwinked by him, but.
Right, right.
That's not, that's not an issue that could.
No one but the developer.
Maybe we just delete that sentence.
Or I was just gonna suggest that we delete that.
Yeah.
I think so. Eli, are you comfortable putting your name to that?
Um, good, one, one more word. I think integrated diverse housing, integrated diverse and affordable. I like the word affordable in there because this is all about affordable housing.
So it should be integrated, comma, right?
And diverse.
Comma.
Vers and affordable.
No, just, no, integrated, diverse, affordable.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Now Eli, are, are we consistent with the word town being capitalized and not capitalized through this document?
Yes.
Seems to me it's wandered around.
I, I don't think so. I think we've been pretty careful, but we can do a quick, a quick review. When we say.
Town probably appears about eighty times.
Control H.
What does control H do for you?
Find and replace.
Um, yeah.
Hang on. No, it doesn't, not on.
Control F. Control F will just find it, but that's good enough.
Go to home.
Yeah, yeah, but we don't necessarily want to replace. We just want to find. We can decide what to do with each one.
There. That, that's what I was trying to do. Yeah, the thing that you have to understand is I am on a Mac, so. Your advice is.
Oh, sorry, command H.
Oh, that changes everything.
Apple H. On a Mac and a Windows program.
While we go hunting around for town, let's just, let's say we're gonna go hunting for town after this, alright? Whack them all on town comes right after this because we still have one little sentence to go.
Oh, okay, right, right.
Okay.
Um, we're convinced, you're, you're talking to the finder of fact and you're saying what the conclusion is. We're convinced that the ultimate, that ultimately the project should not be permitted, should not be permitted.
Correct, should not. Yep.
And I'm not.
I think we're stronger.
Can we just end with the last paragraph in conclusion? And just add that last sentence there. The project even fails, we, we are convinced that ultimately the project should not be permitted. Just tack that on to, in conclusion to that paragraph?
Well, so, so the reason why will is better than should is if you believe that it gets permitted through mass housing and then fails. For safety concerns in the housing appeals committee, then it will not get permitted. So the point is if you want mass housing to simply not issue the Pell. The, the idea is to make the argument that it won't survive that even the HAC appeals.
Right, okay.
So.
And is letter? Yeah, is letter of project eligibility, is that supposed to be capitalized?
So it's usually project eligibility letter, but I think, but I'm also, I don't really like that.
Yep, I agree. Should we be saying then Eli, we are convinced that ultimately the project will not be permitted on appeal to. Housing, the housing, by the housing.
I, I would just leave it vague.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would leave it because it could, it could not be permitted at any of a number of different levels.
Yeah, okay.
So just leave it.
But, and then we also, we start with in conclusion, do we want to end with reaching this conclusion? By not granting a letter of project eligibility.
In conclusion, I think is, is brief and to the point.
Right, I'm just saying that it's, we repeat conclusion again in the last sentence. Do we, does that?
Convinced, please.
Where, where do we?
Where do we repeat it? It's not there.
Yeah, it is. It's in conclusion at the beginning and in the last sentence, the expense of reaching this conclusion.
By not granting, yeah.
So we've got two conclusions.
So let's take out the time and, but we'll leave in the time and expense of. Granting a letter of project eligibility.
The pellet, that's cheap. Um. Demonstrating. Yeah, what do we do? The result rather than conclusion is outcome in the second, in the, at the end. Reaching this outcome.
Oh, we've got that, the last word and the other, the paragraph right four. Does it matter? Not that we're, I'm just.
How about, well, result?
Decision.
Decision, decision, yes, I like decision.
Decision. So please save all involved, the time and expense of reaching this decision. By not granting, well.
Vengeful decision because that's what the time and expense is. It's burning all of that for the next two years.
Please save all of us that all involve the time and expense of, the expense of a long drawn out.
Yeah, or that's what I thought eventual, eventual might capture that.
As for protracted proceedings.
Yeah, protected is, has.
Of protect, of, of, of protected proceedings, no, uh. By refusing to grant.
Yeah.
And Greg, letter of project eligibility or project eligibility letter?
So, so it is a, it is a P E L. That's what they call it.
Okay.
And capital?
Yes.
Yep. And we should put all the enclosures.
What's that?
We should, we should list the enclosures with different letters.
There are five.
Aren't they listed on, I?
They're listed on the version I've got.
They're listed on the version I have as well.
Yeah, I think that's. Yep.
Alright, which version is that? Oh, there are there.
Do you want me to read them?
Oh, oh, oh.
Got a copy paste there?
I got it.
Good.
Well, well done you.
Hmm.
A little scary.
Do you want to send a clean copy for a set of eyes to look over?
Uh, no, I want to finish our final review right now and wrap up, print it.
Okay.
We're gonna look up town.
Yes.
Incidentally, your signature page is a standalone page, so that is.
You have widows and orphans.
Hit the font, hit the font by one.
Somewhere. Alright, let's go back and finish up the task of town. Town.
Good to get page numbers on them too.
Uh, page numbers on the letter?
Yeah.
Page numbers on, on the right hand side.
Thank you. Right, alright, back to town. That one's okay?
That was lowercase, lowercase, uppercase, lowercase.
Because. Or is it, it's a section of town? So that's, yeah. Outskirt of town, that's alright. With, yeah, the town capitalized, good. Without town, good. Section of town. The town. Part of town.
I'm not, I'm not following what's capital and what's not here.
The town is, as a legal entity versus the town as a geographical entity.
Okay.
So what about town drinking water? Is that, are you there?
That's an adjective, that's an adjective.
Oh, Greg, which one?
I would capitalize town and drinking water.
Okay.
I, I would, I would actually do apostrophe S on towns and leave drinking water alone.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna capitalize drinking water.
Like this?
Yep.
And why don't you take out supplies?
Good.
Um, I had, I had missed, is the applicant and its team? Is the applicant a person or a?
His.
Well, S O V is it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Just the applicant has no qualifications to apply, opine.
Fine.
Take out and its team.
Alright, then that, yeah.
Fine. And town, town zone. Okay, uh, second town zone capital, yeah.
And then apostrophe between town and zone.
No, it's a verb. Zone is a verb in this case.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
One second.
Does your computer periodically just save the document?
It does, but um. Actually, no, right now auto save is turned off on this one, so I'm just gonna go ahead.
Yikes.
No, we're not gonna mess with this right now. Nope, 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 nope.
No, we just keep saving.
Yeah. Alright.
There's no more towns?
Oh, there's lots more towns. The town has recently, town on plans, the town, the town. The town, the town of, the center of town, yep, that's legit. The town, annual town meeting, in town projects. The town, the towns. The town, the town, the town's sidewalk system. The town's traffic.
Now we need cap.
What?
In the, yeah, not there.
Next one, town's water support.
Yes, that one.
Both of them do, yeah.
No.
Oh.
Yeah.
Hmm, I.
No.
That's a toughie. Okay.
Our community. They could take out town and put in our community.
Right.
Changing the word to avoid deciding whether or not it needs to be capitalized.
Yep, okay.
Good. Save.
Alright.
Yeah. Alright, so now let's deal with our orphan.
Well, before you deal with your orphan, if you clean out all of the track changes. And I think you can do that at this point by going to. Review.
You would accept all.
And accept all.
Where is it? Where is it? Except.
Except down.
That all change.
On the down arrow? There. Now let's see where that falls.
Same place. I kind of thought that would happen.
Okay, could, could we scroll up to the beginning? There's something that word doesn't like.
Yeah, that's this thing right here, right?
Yeah, there shouldn't be a comma there. Yeah, there shouldn't be a comma there.
Well, um, this is real list, from this point to this point to this point to this point, and there shouldn't be a comma here?
Right.
Right, because you've got from two.
It's from two, and then you're adding on a bunch of other twos, if you take the comma out, I bet those double lines disappear.
All right.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
I'm sorry, Anne, you really liked that comma, I know.
Yeah. Oh, hey. All right, so now, down and back to the, the orphan.
Okay, one of the things you can do is just increase the space between paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could increase the line spacing slightly.
Slightly, I like that one. I know somebody once wrote, uh, was asked to increase the number of pages in the report, so he went into the middle of the report and, um, because he had written it technically concisely, wrote about three or four pages of sheep, 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 fluffy white sheep. Never heard anything about it. I don't think we can get away with that.
No.
All right. That is.
What about the if and when, doesn't like your if and when either?
Oh.
Hit ignore.
Yeah.
Doesn't know what it's talking about. All right, back to the space. 1.15, how about that?
You have to do, uh.
Control A, or command A.
Command A.
Now, let's make sure to wreck all of our indentation, oh, did a good job, good boy. Hey, there we go. Cool.
And then accept all changes.
Yeah.
Doesn't like mass housing either.
Yeah.
Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Watch this. Oh, it wants the comma not to be there, oh, it's gonna complain to us about every single one as we go down the line.
So you have to ignore every single one.
Oh, no, no, that's the same problem, it's from two.
Yep, yep.
So take out the comma.
Well, hmm. No, no, it's not.
No, it's a series.
It's a series, just like the other one.
Yeah.
It's the same one. It's, it's a different kind of from, the, the, yes.
All right, then you have to take out all the twos.
Nope, no, no, it's happened.
It's due to runoff and unidentified, um, vernal pools.
Can we ignore it?
No, 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 what, it's one thought, water quality concerns due to runoff is one thought. It's.
Are there quality concerns due to runoff and unidentified onsite waste?
No, no, no. Water quality concerns due to runoff.
Then you'd have to, would due to in each construction.
I don't think so.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything more.
I think at this point.
If you want to do the construct, you would, you would, you would keep doing from and twos.
Yeah.
So you need a series of from and twos, so from massive blasting to water quality concerns due to runoff, from.
No, okay, it's, it's, it's a series of.
Leave it, just leave it.
Just leave it. Yeah.
It's just, it's not parallel construction, but that's okay.
Greg, is mass housing with no space, the way that they see themselves? As opposed to mass, capital M, capital H, mass space housing?
Believe it's all one. One word. Yeah, it's, it's, it's mass housing as one word, no space, but, but the capital M and capital H. That's their convention.
Got it, okay.
Now, one last little scroll through here. Oops, hello. All right.
Wait a minute, where was, could you go, um, it just looked like something funny where denial of a I thought I saw something that looked funny where. No, never mind.
There should be a comma after Waltham Mass. Oh, yeah, after Waltham, Lexington Woods versus Waltham, comma, the mass housing field.
Hi, I, I'm sorry to come in without being invited, um, are the numbers on the top intro matching the numbers that you have on the detail, because there are, I thought, five on the key aspects and there are six?
No, there's, no, there's six and, six and six.
Are they all matching?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
They, they, the titles don't have exactly the same wording, but.
The topics of this matched.
Okay, and then the other thing, I noticed at the beginning, there was a lot of concern about underlining particular things and that sort of fell off, I don't know if that.
That really applied to the, just number one.
Yeah, that applied to number one, Sandy, because they were, uh, the actual sustainability provisions of mass housing.
Okay, I didn't know, because every once in a while, there were other sustainable, um, references, just just checking, thank you for all your efforts.
Well, I thank you to you and Helen and Sarah for sitting around through all of this, watching paint dry is a lot more fun.
And Gail.
And Gail.
Gail, we.
Gail especially.
We owe thanks to every time we meet.
But she also had the sense not to intrude her very good taste in our editing.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't know how the minutes are gonna express when we actually do things.
Yes. Yes, we, we want a detailed accounting of all the additions and deletions.
All right, are we good?
Yes, we are.
I think so.
Accept all changes and say.
Is it paginated?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep, all right, it is seven pages and I'm gonna print it and sign it.
Well done.
I'll send a soft copy back to Greg and C C the board. And, uh, yeah.
Get it up when it's convenient on the website.
Yeah, and now we have one other aspect to cover, so I'm gonna stop sharing this now. Uh, if I have to reshare it, I will. So the only other aspect that we needed to talk about, I think, was we said that we were gonna forward a copy of this to the M A B. And I sent you guys a, forwarded you guys a mail on this. So are you okay with, um, asking Greg to forward this to him with a, uh, request about whether or not he could provide an advisory opinion about, uh, the need for an accessible route?
Yes. ASAP, yeah, second.
All right, so there was a motion that we asked Greg to, um, forward this to the M A B, William Joyce, the M A B, uh, along with a request for an advisory opinion. Asking successively to the public way would be required under, 521 C M R 20, I think it was. And, uh, there was second for it in discussion. I'm favorable, call vote, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bobma Turner? He's thinking. He's muted.
He's also muted.
Does this cost us anything?
Oh.
No? Yes.
Should we put?
My vote is yes.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Jakes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowlin votes yes. All right.
Eli, you should take a, a vote to, to approve the letter.
Oh, that.
Should, should.
I suppose that would be in order.
If we're going to copy it to someone, should we add that person to the C C list? Now that you've printed it and it's all done and perfect?
I haven't printed it, yeah. Suppose we probably should, Greg, got an opinion?
Yeah, no, I, I would, it'd be William Joyce, executive director of M A B. A D, I'm sorry. No, B, I'm, board, direct. Let's choose as Architectural Access Board, M A B.
Is it sufficient to say M A B?
Yeah, that's fine.
So William Joyce, Executive Director, M A B. Yes?
Yes, yes.
Double and triple check the spelling. Yes, I want to get it right. Okay. No, except all changes. All right, so I'll take a motion to approve, um, the letter to mass housing, to Michael Bossby at the mass, mass housing regarding the sanctuary at Shingle Hill, uh, sanctuary in Manchester by C M H I D number 1116.
So move to approve the letter.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bobma Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yeah.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowlin votes yes. All right, I think we're done, are we done?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bobma Turner?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yeah.
Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowlin votes yes, that was my last meeting as chair.
Thank you very much, Eli, for doing that.
Thank you, Eli.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, indeed.
So Eli, you'll, you'll sign and, and send to me a PDF of that?
Yeah, uh, is PDF okay, or you want the wet too?
A PDF is okay, he, he, he's, he said we can ship this all by, by, uh, by PDF.
All right. Fair enough. I'll get that to you immediately. All right, folks, um, and I will see you guys later, have an excellent rest of your week. Helen and Sarah, um, Gail didn't waste any time getting, uh, on out here, Helen and Sarah, thank you for staying on. Um, um, I don't know for sure if you're still awake, if there's a good chance that I would have fallen asleep. If not, uh, thank you, and we will see you guys all later.
Well done, Eli, thank you so much.
Everybody, Eli, have a good trip.
Thanks, bye.